eighty eighth regular session of the Sangguyang Bayan of Ipeel. And good morning to barangay dumandan headed by barangay captain, uh honorable Rosana Pak Sudan and the, and to the barangay council and to the SK council headed by the honorable Arnold Revilla. Will everyone please rise for the entrance of the official mates of this Sangguyang Bayan, together with our presiding officer, the honorable Ramzes Troy de Oligario, and our acting secretary for today's session, Madam Geraldine Cardenya.
Hello, may buntag sa tanan? The eighty eighth regular session is hereby called order. To start with, uh my request, the honorable Al-Hafid Muhammad for the invocation until be followed by the singing of the Philippine national anthem.
Ay, wala na siya tanan raum, smla rahman rahim. Alhamdulillah, heratul ala nun ar rahman rahim na lukyanitun. Ila ka na abu, bayaka na sa'yun, ihunas seratal mustaqun. Seratal labuna nanta alohim, barun nadzub, alohim na labbaun. Amin. Namadha ma'adfar la ma'ajun ibana, rasrak panayna pri amrona, wasabu takda manan surna al qumul kahilin. Wassallallah ala akhar rukisawunna Muhammadun, wa ala alohu wa sahbi rasunun. Asma'ibri, hamdu lama, amin.
Akabayan, salam.
Everyone, please be seated. Like to request the Madam Secretary for the roll call.
Good morning and welcome to the eighty eighth regular session of the Sangguyang Bayan of Ipeel. Honorable Chair, at the following, the honorable Ramzes Troy de Oligario, the Honorable Catherine Tualba, the Honorable Parida Dampalan, the Honorable Jelit Mahir Hasin, the Honorable Chucks Mil Palalan, the Honorable Liran Tatlan Nwega, Honorable Ajay Al-Hafid Muhammad, the Honorable Ray Andy C. and the Honorable Oligario, the Honorable Sarapnin Ramos, and the Honorable.
With ten members being present for today's regular sess- uh mobile session, the Chair would like to declare that there is a forum. Um, sir floor leader for the adoption of the order of business.
Mister Chair, this young true, may I move for the adoption of the order of business for today's regular session?
Any second to the discussion, Julie Seganda, discussion, any amendments, objection, there being on the motion is here by approved.
Mister Chair, we are now on the visitors are, may I move for the suspension of the rules?
A rule suspended to accommodate our visitor for this morning?
Standard.
Uh Mister Chair, we will request our uh barangay captain to please introduce her uh kagawan kay mga bag umang yuni ang uban. Mister Chair, before we will uh give the floor to barangay council of Dumandan, may I move Mister Chair to acknowledge the honorable Doctor Adayan Catalunya?
Hey, the Honorable Adayan Catalunya.
Ah, may buntag sa tanan? Uh dinin ako may isa isa idistroya sa inyo ha, kuwan per welcome mo sa barangay karoon puntaga. Uh, di gan sa kuwan, ang ito sa mga barangay na barangay kagawad hasta mga aneski, oris, or surag, ilan kuha ni la. Ang sarap kayon kapalay sumisig, Rosana Pamilya Paksudan, at ang naguayon kapital na dito. Agawas, the Honorable General, General, General. Kailan, sobra't lumukuan, kip, makalu'nu'ku, kip, sorry. Ang inlang, kano'ku ban, kali'nu'ku, sorry. So, si Ongay, bro, do'na, personal, arawasang. Uka't ka, barangay, honorable, respect, and honor. Salamat sa, sa, sa. Sorry, sorry, wala ba'y walang karoon? It's, sorry, mahal na, mga, sumisay, maroon. So, 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 so. So, 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 so. So, 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 so.
We'd like to thank uh the barangay council of barangay Dumandan for the warm welcome and for the preparation ngay langi himo. No, alang sa kasayuran sa barangay council, sa barangay Dumandan, kani siguro uh so far uh pinaka bunggang up preparation nga giandam sa Sangguyang Dayan of Ipeel, so we got, dagangkay salamat, no? Dagangkay salamat in behalf of the Sangguyang Dayan, so may we proceed?
Mister Chair, if the barangay council has their concern, no? Uh basina mo'y mga concern nga, ang ipaabot sa Sangguyang Bayan, and this is not the time, please do so. Mister Chair, I move that the honorable SK chairman, Mister uh honorable Arnold uh Revilla be recognized.
Hey, the Honorable Revilla, you're now recognized.
Very much, Mister Chair, before we accommodate the honorable Revilla, may I move to relinquish this chair to honorable, uh, Honorable Chong?
Honorable Chong, thank you, Honorable Tualba. Okay, uh, the Honorable Revilla, you may go ahead with your uh closing concerns of this barangay.
Magandang umaga Pilipinas, magandang umaga sombangan, sibugay magandang umaga, bahay ng Ipeel, magandang umaga barangay Dumandan.
Morning.
Hi, lovely honorable, may buntag sa tanan, we are very happy to see you in the black university today. Hi, uh, your effort is highly appreciated indeed. So, and behalf of my council of barangay Dumandan, I am the lucky one, I guess lucky, chambus kidding. So, ako ang napili nga para mo present sa mga mga, sa mga barangay, so first, I am about to uh say the Sangguyang Kabataan concern, first is, don't have our SK hall, second is, computer, office, and chairs. Then, I'm gonna try for my SK council, program for my fellow youth, first, the materials, then, that, but not the most, of the, uh, level of education. Then, those are the council of my barangay, here.
would take mga five to six months in it. Tagrabik na pag winetin nagtinawon lima unang kabulang, then they will tougher. I think the concern of our agriculture officer is not the what's happening calamity now, may calamidad din karoon. But preparation to contend in case calamity comes. What preparation should be made content with the calamity? Kaya, tinawag na pod, no? And once of prevention is worth tons of medicines. So, so kaya nga, andan guta. So I think that is the concern of the agriculture officer, municipal agriculture officer. So, I hope you will look into it, no? Kung is ato matabang sa Eldrum in case, in case, in case.
Okay, Anwar, uh, verities, uh, verification. Uh, Mr. Flur, there will, have you?
Honorable Chair, I'm, I move that honorable Sabion be recognized.
The Honorable Counselor Glenn Ian Roy Sabion is acknowledged, morning sir. So, Anwar, verification, uh, there hold lang pala.
So, um, have you, uh, checked on the, uh, level of the municipality? As we all know that they use already, um, specifically on the supply of workers. So, just like, uh, simplest, uh, becoming a state of calamity, just because of these specific workers. And the basis of this, so, um, please, first. But I'm sure I must say, uh, I must say, uh, I'm not telling you. So, uh, concerned with this. Uh, same, uh, issue, uh, uh, the supply, uh, there's a normal household because all the households do not have it as. And then, very small, uh, kaya, but so, ah, sa akin na lang, persiya, uh, mga, uh, uh, we are, uh,
Bring what through the visitors, our honorable chair.
Okay, may we proceed, Mr. Flora, with the privilege R.
We are now on privilege R. Is there anybody among honorable members of this chamber who has who must have the privilege, please raise your hand, Honorable, Honorable Chair, I move that Honorable Parida be recognized.
Hello, good morning everyone. As to the Barangay Council of Hello, to the Barangay Council of Barangay Dumanan, headed by the Barangay Captain, Honorable Rosana Pak Sudan, and of course, to the SK Chairman of Barangay Dumanan, the Honorable Rabilla, and to the people of Ah, barangay Dumanan, by Sisalam, good morning, Katanan. Ah, salamat, Flora, sumama na nung pagdagan sa barangay at Epeel, and of course, um, to the Um, first, ah, the Ah, Dumanan, and the members, headed by Ah, and ah, sir. Thank you very much, Subhana, Subhana, Intelecian, sa mo ang pataduk, is Allah ang barangay. Um, here I am, uh, 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 um, we got time, uh, 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 uh,
Thank you, no longer, next.
Anymore? Honorable Sabia?
Look, look, Mr. Chair, Madam Secretary, um, just want to thank, um, um, Council of barangay Dumanan, headed by Honorable Pak Sudan, and thank you sa para try and welcome sa mga or sa invasions niya at karonan, thank you, so, thank you.
Anymore? Honorable Catalunya, Honorable Talba? Honorable Ramos? So, Honorable Chair, I would also want to take this opportunity to thank the barangay Council of barangay Dumanan for this wonderful commemoration extended to us. May I always cherish this moment with you. Thank you, Honorable Chair, that will be all.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Flora, are there anymore? Privilege, uh, would like to avail of their privilege R, moment. Okay, may we proceed, Mr. Flora, with the reading of the minutes of the previous session?
Honorable Chair, I meant to dispense the reading of the minutes of the previous session, and at the same time move for its approval.
Okay, there's a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the previous session as well as for the approval of the minutes of the previous session. Any second for the motion? Do you second that by the, the Honorable Hasim, question? Any objection? Moving on, the motion is hereby approved. Madam Secretary, for the reference of business?
For the order of business under other communications, item A, annual budget for 02024 of barangay Magaay.
Honorable Chair, I move that this item be referred to committee on appropriation.
Hey, refer this matter to committee on appropriations?
Item B, supplemental budget number one for calendar year 2024 of barangay Bakalat.
Honorable Chair, I move that this matter be also referred to committee on appropriation.
Again, refer this matter to committee on appropriations?
We are now on the committee report, Honorable Chair.
You are now on committee report, anybody among the members on committee report? Honorable Chair, I move that Honorable Catalunya be recognized.
The Honorable Catalunya?
Perfect, let him sign that. Hello, good morning, Mr. Chair, Committee Report Number 295, a committee referral, a letter from the municipal mayor requesting an ordinance institutionalizing key assistance for developing adolescents in the municipality of Epeel. The committee finds that the above referral is consistent with the prevailing laws, but since the commission was requesting for sponsorship, the committee then recommends that this ordinance be open for sponsorship from anybody from this august body. I hereby move for the adoption of Committee Report Number 295.
Okay, there's a motion for the adoption of the committee report, duly surrendered by the Honorable Sabia, discussion, any objection? Moving on, the motion is hereby approved.
Another Honorable Catalunya? Okay.
95? Consideration. For consideration.
Hello, yes, for consideration, Honorable Chair, I, uh, correction, Committee Report Number 296.
Okay, please, can I take note, Madam Secretary?
Honorable Palalon, any committee report?
Committee Report on Committee on Appropriation, Committee Report Number 297, subject is barangay annual budget 2024 of barangay Maasin amounting to 2,798,354 pesos. The remarks and recommendations of the committee on appropriation, to which was referred the barangay annual budget 2024 of barangay Maasin of this municipality for review, evaluation, and approval. The said barangay annual budget 2024 has been referred to the local finance committee through the municipal budget officer for technical review and preliminary review. So after review, it is hereby declared operative in its entirety upon its approval, subject to the posting requirements under section 59 of RA 7160 and further subject to the conditions cited in the local finance committee review. In the implementation of its budget, the LGU must assert an adherence to the fundamental principles enumerated in section 305 of the code. It is understood that the review action does not authorize any item of appropriation that is specifically prohibited by or inconsistent with the provision of law. The committee hereby recommends for its approval that compliance with the foregoing in the execution of the budget shall be the sole responsibility of the implementing barangay government using the standard guidelines or procedure in the budget execution phase prescribed under the Budget Civil Service Laws, Budgeting, Accounting, and Auditing Rules and Regulations. Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of the Committee Report Number 27 of Committee on Appropriation.
Okay, any second for the motion for adoption of said committee report, discussion, any objection? Moving on, the motion is hereby approved.
Mr. Chair, I move to pass for a resolution declaring operative in its entirety of the barangay annual budget 2024 of barangay Maasin amounting to 2,798,354 pesos.
Has been moved?
What's the name of the Honorable Chair?
Discussion, any amendments, objection? Moving on, the motion is hereby approved.
That's all, Mr. Chair.
You, Honorable Palalon, next. General Valdor Alba? Honorable Talba?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Committee Report Number 298 of the Committee on Housing and Land Utilization. The subject is the reimbursed letter of PNP Forensic Group Regional Field Office 9 for a 1,000 square meter lot donation from LGU for the construction of Zambranga Cibugay Forensic Unit at Epeel owned lot of the LGU ridge at barangay Epeel Heights, Epeel Zambranga Cibugay. The remarks and recommendations, the committee on housing and land utilization, to which was the above subject matter was referred for review upon proper consultation with the office of the musical planning and development officer. It is recommended by 22,000 square meters, and parcel of lot number 942B, and that, or, dash, dash, one, located at barangay Epeel Heights, Zambranga Cibugay. The developer group, and development of the lot, and, uh, 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 uh,
Okay, has been moved and duly surrendered, discussion, any objection? Moving on, the motion is hereby approved for the adoption of the said committee report.
Mr. Chair, I move for a resolution, uh, considering that we have already identified the lot to the PNP Forensic Group, may I move, my Mr. Chair, uh, resolution donating the 1,000 square meters lot to the PNP Forensic Group Regional Office 9.
Second, Honorable Chair.
Okay, has been moved and duly surrendered by the Honorable Chair, discussion, any clarifications, queries, amendments, objection? Moving on, the motion is hereby approved.
Another resolution, Mr. Chair, authorizing the local chief executive, the Honorable Anamel C. Oligaya, to sign the deed of, uh, donation of a lot of 1,000 square, uh, square meters to PNP Forensics Regional Office 9 and to, and in behalf of local government committee of Epeel.
Second, Honorable Chair.
Duly surrendered by the Honorable Chair, discussion, any objection? Moving on, the motion is hereby approved.
Another committee report, Mr. Chair, Committee Report Number 299, on the, still on the Committee on Housing and Land Utilization, the subject is the request of Villa Babiera First Two Homeowners Association Incorporated, located at Epeel Heights, Epeel Zambranga Cibugay for renewal of development permit. The Committee on Housing and Land Utilization, to which was the above subject matter was referred, recommended by the Municipal Planning and Development Office of the City, again, the local homeowners association, which is again, the committee's meeting, and then with undergraduates, and, and legal requirements in compliance. So, I move, Mr. Chair, for the adoption of this report number 299.
Okay, any second for motion? Duly surrendered, any objection? Moving on, the motion is hereby approved.
Another committee report, Mr. Chair, uh, Committee Report Number 200, Rules, Organizations and Resolutions, which was given by the government, to grant to the department of arts and arts and sports and, and LGU Epeel, for the grant of this emergency allowance or the here, for eligible workers and, 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 the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, 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 uh,
Surrendered motion for adoption? Surrendered by Honorable Palalon, discussion, any objection? Moving on, the motion is hereby approved.
Mr. Chair, I move for a resolution approving content of the Noah to be entered into the Department of Health Regional, Regional Office 9 with the local government committee of Epeel.
Second for motion? Duly surrendered by Honorable Palalon, discussion, any objection? Moving on, the motion is hereby approved.
Another resolution, Mr. Chair, giving authority to the local chief executive to enter into a memorandum of agreement, Department of Health Zambranga Penisula Center for Health Development, uh, presented by the medical director, J. B. R. R. R., and the local government committee of Epeel, presented by the, uh, 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 uh,
Any second for motion? Duly surrendered by Honorable Palalon, discussion, amendments, objection? Moving on, the motion is hereby approved.
Another committee report, Mr. Chair, on the Committee on Rules, Orders, and Resolutions, is the memorandum of agreement, uh, to be entered into by the Department of Environment and Natural Resources, uh, and the LGU Epeel, which is, uh, 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 the, the Committee on Rules, Orders, and, and Resolutions to which the above subject matter was referred for review after review, equals, uh, 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 and consistent with form and substance, allowed to, uh, 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 Exactly, the motion, surrendered again by Honorable Palalon, discussion, any amendments, objection? Moving on, the motion is hereby approved. Mr. Chair, I move for another resolution, authorizing the local chief executive to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Department of Environment and Natural, Natural Resources, uh, presented by, such, if inspiration developments to, 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 uh, 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 that will be, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Talba.
Anybody else has committee report? Please raise your hand. Any other committee report? Honorable Ramos? Since there is none, Honorable Chair, we are through the committee report.
Okay, uh, Madam Secretary?
We are now on the business for the read, on second reading, item A, an ordinance amending ordinance number 03, 17, otherwise, oh, known as the, uh, children's welfare for the municipality of Epeel.
Okay, what's the pressure of the opponent?
Um, uh, since you only give a, with the time constraint until 12:00, uh, 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 available time, but I hope to give it to the members of the council, I move, Honorable Chair, uh, 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 Mr. Chair?
Ilagay, ma'am.
Huh? Na?
Na pa.
Wala, meron ba tanggri?
Third reading.
Na?
The final reading, dyan, second floor.
Asato, marginal. Wala, magot.
Yeah.
Wala, wala, ah, okay.
The final reading, dyan.
Ah, okay. Okay, uh, we are now on the third and final reading for this ordinance, an ordinance adapting the official seal of Zambranga Cibugay, the Epeel prescribing the use and introducing penalty for the unofficial and authorized use thereof. So for those who are in favor, kindly raise your right hand and say aye. All members are in favor of this ordinance? This ordinance is hereby approved for the third and final reading. Next, an ordinance unfunding the position of sanitation inspector one, salary grade six, under the office of the municipal health, for those are in favor, kindly raise your right hand and say aye. Again, all members are, uh, uh, in favor of this ordinance, let this ordinance be, is hereby approved for the third and, uh, reading. So, Flora, leader, for a period of other matters?
Other matters, Mr. Chair?
General Talba?
I move for the suspension of the rules, Mr. Chair.
Okay, you suspend it?
I have just something to, to discuss, uh, there was a matter that was referred to the committee on land use, uh, housing and land utilization with regard to the 4PH Katumpa Bahay, then it was, uh, referred pending recommendations from the local housing board to identify, uh, the location, the lot, that will be, uh, 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 let's talk, we had, we had a conversation with the legal, legal officer of the, of the, Mr. Chair, which said that, that, uh, 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 There's a motion, and duly surrendered by Honorable Talba, discussion, any clarification
regards to that motion, any objection? Moving on, the motion is hereby approved.
With, 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 uh, 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 There's a motion that this, uh, body will be committed to the committee of the whole, any second of motion?
Duly surrendered by Honorable Talba, discussion, any objection? Moving on, the motion is hereby approved, this body be converted to the committee of the whole.
Mr. Chair, thank you, I move for a resolution, Mr. Chair, uh, 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 uh,
Duly surrendered by Honorable Talba, discussion? Any clarifications or any objection? Moving on, the motion is hereby approved.
Another resolution, Mr. Chair, authorizing the local chief executive to enter into a memorandum of, uh, 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 There's a motion, and duly surrendered by Honorable Talba, discussion, clarification, amendments, objection?
Moving on, the motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Talba. Anymore, other concerns, other matters?
Other matters, Mr. Chair? Uh, baliko na'to kay nag, nag-inquire ang katung, ulo ka employees, katung, ang ilahang sweldo i-charge sa
Prior year?
Supplemental? At the recommendation? The municipal budget officer, if he can charge that current appropriation, thank you, Madam, Mr. Chair, without Mr. Chair, I move that the salaries of, uh, 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 Another concern, Mr. Chair, I already talked to Haji Ateb, our IPMR in the municipality, regarding the pending ordinance of former IPMR residual, uh, 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 nga, ilang tanong ito batay, Mr. Makasusay, o, basa mga indigenous peoples, nga, madalang ito, di ba ang mga turismo, kasi makita nulang, so karon, meron, nung tapa sa Mr. Kalbakran ito, po, osa dya, ang Mr. Yato, kasi na siya, since time memorial na, namindas dya, so karon, naggalak pa tao, Mr. Kalbakran, para mga bukunit nato siya, so katulad, Mr. Chair, thank you very much.
Honorable Chair?
Yes, Honorable Talba?
I understand, na, na, na siyang ordinan, so, ang recommendation nilang at is pabukiri, so, uh, 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 uh,
Okay, Honorable Talba?
Mauna ko siya, Honorable Parida, nga, siguro, na'to pabukiri, conductor, after siguro sa Ramadan, na, Ramadan, okay?
Thank you, Honorable Talba, Mahamat. Anymore, concerns? Other matters? Any announcements? Wala na 'yung lintan? Wala na? Okay? Mobile? Ata. Ah, okay, ata. Okay, for the announcement, our next, uh, session, again, will be a mobile session to be held at Barangay Benandres. Na na ebon new? Okay, kindly inform, ah, naman na'to ang SK, asa pa dito mag session? Mangita pa? Okay, kay, dili, kay, dili pa ako, and, kaya, inform lang ahead of time para, mukanda pa tayo session sa'to ang, uh, session hold?
Mas may naman umuwi.
Balik sure?